Chris, would you have prayer for us, please?
Sure. Harold Fowler, Lord, we thank you for your love and your mercy, and we thank you for everything you do for us daily. Lord, we pray that you would watch over this meeting and make sure that the decisions here that are made tonight would be pleasing to you and would be beneficial to the county. Lord, also pray for the family of Baron Barnett. He passed away, as you know, this last week, and I'm sure his family right now is devastated. Just lift them up in prayers and pray that you would comfort them and give them direction in their life. In Jesus' name, a prayer, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you've not already done so, please sign in. So, it looks like we're all here except for Daniel. If it's all right with the rest of the council, Ernie has asked to say a few words about Baron and then...
Yeah. Thank you. One of the folks in this audience know Baron Barnett and you know his tenacity for taking things. He was a strong advocate of the county, worked for the county for a long time in different positions. Baron died last Tuesday night, 9/30. And he's going to be missed in the county. A lot of, not influenced, but he had a lot of drive. He touched everybody in this room, you know, in Ashford and all. So, as my friend, he'll be dearly missed. The other issue I have is 911. I give each one of you a copy of the present. This is in the website, the present website.
Ernie, can you come up here?
Yeah, I'm going to come and talk to the...
Talk into the mic, please, if it's on before.
I'm sorry.
I didn't mean to make this a long issue.
It's okay.
Anyway, I want everybody to pay attention to 911. They are the spark plug in this county. Nothing moves unless it's addressed through them, through them. We don't call the sheriff's department to have them come out if I got an emergency. I call 911. And I've used them in the past year a couple of times. They've managed to walk through the things that I needed and had an ambulance parked at McDonald's waiting for me when I got to town. So, it's very important, very important.
Yes, it is.
Our department doesn't go out unless they get notification, whether it be Cataract, whether it be Poland, whatever, Owen Valley. City doesn't get addressed, same thing. We need direction. We need direction. Now, I don't know who's directing it now, but it doesn't matter. We need somebody that's going to be part of that operation and make this county safe again. It's important. There's no one paid enough money in this county to make it work over there. They won't go and take that job because it's a damn dirty job. No one wants it. Two young ladies in the back row will attest to that. It's a tough one, and it takes care of their energy and their mental capacity as well as physical and family. That's all I have. Thank you for letting me address this tonight.
Thank you, Ernie.
I hear you. And Baron appreciates your...
Yeah, he will definitely be missed. He was a great advocate for not only his township, but his county. All right, council, you have your minutes in front of you. Let's take a short time. Is he...
This is what?
Okay. Are there any additions or corrections? You have some, don't you?
I...
Or did you already?
Corrections to what Anton... I would appreciate that, Anton.
Sure.
So, is there a motion to accept the minutes?
Oh, correction.
Which one?
The number one.
There were you. Did you read along, online? Okay. Well, let's see here. You go to... Down with our fiscal responsibility, Finbridge and FinCap funds. I can send them to via email, because...
That's true. If you would do that.
I will.
You need a motion?
Yes.
I made a motion, and you should manage with the correction.
Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Anton? All those in favor? Motion carried. One of them's stinging.
Six, zero.
He wasn't here. All right, moving on to financial reports. Have anything to add? Beth?
Not really. I mean, Anton could probably give a better breakdown, even though Sheila's got the budgets put together. Trying to get them entered into everything. So, she is way ahead of time, but you're going to have to really help her out because she's not well.
Yeah.
And overworking will do that, too.
Mm-hmm. I told her she needs to start delegating.
And that's a hard thing to do.
Mm-hmm. Especially when you're used to doing it all yourself.
Right.
Now, are these the ones that you had, I mean, the updated ones that you gave me in the commissioners' meeting?
I don't think those are the updated ones. She put the package together, so I don't know that it shows.
Because I bought the ones you gave me in the commissioners' meeting.
No, it's there. I don't think they are the same.
Yeah, because the one...
These are dated 7/16, and it goes out to 7/21. So, it goes out from today.
Okay.
And the one you have goes out to maybe 23.
The 23, mm-hmm. It's not a huge difference, it's just small.
No, not really.
On the storage units, the expenditure was $162,000. Could it just get moved to another fund?
So, we didn't get any of the claims or anything with this, did we? It was just the...
I emailed those to you.
Okay.
Along with the salary.
Okay, okay.
I do have a list here, and you want to look at it.
I can just look at my email.
Okay.
That'd be fine.
And also, while we're looking at fund balances, Polly, myself, and the health department met up with Sheila to clean up those grant funds. If you remember, there were some negative funds relating to some grants just from over the years. Nothing necessarily specifically in the recent time, but just past years, and they've just been on the books. We did get those rectified by transferring some balances from other grant funds that had positive balances, which was allowed. So, that, there's probably six different funds that are health-related that are in this report that are reflecting the correct numbers and cleanup. So, we really appreciate the health department and Sheila really doing the work on those things and getting it cleaned up, so.
I do have a question. I know they've been working on the payroll health benefit because that's getting, I mean, it's negative $93,000 right now. So, I know that there is, there's a discrepancy there on...
She has found that.
Okay.
And she wants to get it in Lao, but she wants the lady from Lao to make sure she's walking her through everything. So, that will turn around. I mean, she has it right on her desk. She showed me today, and that should be...
I know they've been working on trying to find the problem there.
She found it, and it went back to 20.
Okay.
Yeah, it went back. Did she tell you about it?
No, but is it good news?
Yes.
Okay.
It's going to be a surplus, so it's probably that amount that we had to pay back to the state.
Hmm, okay.
Yeah, so that'll be good news.
Okay, good.
And she worked hard finding that.
Oh, I know. All right, moving on. I hereby open the public hearing for the additional appropriations. You have those in front of you. And these were the ones that were advertised, so we voted on these last month. Are there any questions on... Is there any questions from the public on the additional appropriations?
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the following additional appropriations. Fund 1206, 774555, for contract services. Fund 1170, $243,268.18, to vehicles, equipment, and computers et al. And fund 1135, bridge, $234,000, for other services.
Motion been made, is there a second? Second by Daniel. Are there any questions on this? All those in favor? Motion carried. The public hearing is now closed. Moving on. We don't have any old business under new business. It was requested by Matt to be on our agenda, and Sheila forgot to put him on here. Is it all right with the council to add Matt to our agenda here?
I make a motion and we'll...
Motion made by Nick, second by Daniel. All those in favor? Motion carried.
So, this paper that Ernie brought in, this needs some editing. It's one page. Their job description is probably three or four pages. There's a lot that they do that isn't even close to being touched on what's on here. Just for starters, I hadn't seen this, so thank you, Ernie, still here, you left, for bringing this in. But yeah, that's going to need some editing. I've given you guys each a proposal. I've talked to a few of you about this already. As you know, our 911 director resigned again. Our assistant director also resigned, so currently there is really no leadership at the 911 center at the moment. In the meantime, while the 911 board is trying to figure out how we're going to move forward and work with commissioners on that, dispatchers, Alyssa Heaslet and Stephanie Fearnow have both stepped up and have been doing a lot of the administrative things as far as scheduling payroll and kind of day-to-day operations with the center. They're doing that on top of their regular assignments, their regular jobs. They're still on the schedule, they're still dispatching, they're filling in where places need to be filled in where the director or assistant director typically would. So, they're taking on a lot of added responsibility. I think it's only fair that they be compensated for that. With the absence of the director and the assistant director, that should free up a little bit of funds and payroll to hopefully be able to make that happen. What I've given you, this is, I was asked to kind of look at some ideas on how to go about making that compensation work or what it would be, instead of just coming up with a random number. So, I looked at the base pay rate for the dispatchers versus the base pay rate for the assistant director and what the difference between that was, which essentially was $2.22 an hour. What I'm asking for, at least, obviously, if you decide that, you know, that it should be more than this, that would be perfectly fine, too. But I think at the minimum, they should be compensated since May 29th was when they took on these responsibilities. I think they should at least be compensated at the same rate that the assistant director would have been paid for the work that they've done. So, the $2.22 on regular pay and $3.33 at time and a half for any overtime work that they've done since May 29th.
Yeah, it is.
Is this a temporary, is this still there?
Yes, no, this is, we're working on it with the 911 board right now. We actually presented something to the commissioners that was tabled. I don't know where that's going to go, so we're kind of waiting to hear from them. So, at the bottom of my proposal here, I put, well, I put somewhere in there, sorry, that this should be continued until the additional workloads alleviated or taken away from them. So, as of right now, they are continuing to do the schedule and payroll and other things that come up on a random daily basis, so.
Have you been getting any applications?
We have not put it out for applications yet. Again, the 911 board per ordinance is required to establish or to present to the commissioners candidates for the 911 director position. So, we've had some meetings discussing how we're going to move forward with that, because to be honest with you, I've reached out to several people, I know others have, too, and we're just, we're getting zero interest. All of the, I wouldn't say all, but, and Chris can correct me if I'm wrong here, the majority of the candidates that we get for the position are not qualified for it. It's not just something we can just plug somebody into, we've learned that. So, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse here, you guys have heard it 100,000 times. I mean, this is, this is a professional job that is a career. It's not something you just plug somebody in, and we're not getting the applicants or when we put this out for director, we're not getting the applicants who are typically the caliber that we, that we're looking for to run the center and that's going to be here and stay for longer than a year or two years. You know, every time this happens, it causes an issue in the 911 center. They have no guidance, they have no leadership. They're constantly wondering what's going to happen with the center next. I wouldn't want to work in that environment, so I'm thankful for the ones that are sticking this out. Again, you know, this is now the third time. So, we're trying to come up with a way to move forward for something more permanent, not something that's just going to be a Band-Aid to fix it for right now, because we've got, we've got to get this solved. I mean, we've got to, whatever happens, you know, we've got to figure out some way to get somebody in here that's going to do the job and is going to stay and work here and be dedicated to the county and not just, not just, you know, let me put some time in and go somewhere else.
Matt, can you put a timeframe on this, or maybe you already said and I didn't hear? Are we talking about to the first of the next year?
The commit, we're waiting on the commissioners. When they make a decision as far as what the recommendation the board just presented to them, if they approve that recommendation, that could be as quickly as the next commissioners' meeting on the 7th. I think they said they were going to make a decision. So, it could be as quickly as the 7th. They could not accept the recommendation, and we could be back to, as far as the board, back to square one, trying to figure out where to go.
Matt, one second.
Go ahead.
The staff out there, as far as I'm concerned, deserve this, and I will make a motion that we grant your request. And I don't know how long this is going to be. We're kind of flying in the dark here, but once the commissioners, our budget hearing comes up here in just a few weeks, we can make some definite decisions there. But I make a motion that we grant this, and we grant it out of the Fund 1222, which is their fund.
I second that. But I have another question.
Yeah.
On the director, short of salary, is there any other issues that keep coming up?
Well, I mean, yes, that's, if you try to think about it as, you know, if we hire a new director and, you know, Alyssa and Stephanie know exactly where I'm coming from, this isn't anything new they're hearing. We've been discussing this for a while. Training has been absolutely subpar at the dispatch center. I fault that with former directors. We've tried. I actually was on the phone last week with Kathleen Lamb, the former, 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 former director of the center. She's still, she's still dispatching now, and she is Apco-certified instructor, and she has agreed to come and do in-person training for dispatch. We're trying to work out the logistics, what dates might be funding and all that kind of stuff right now. But I'm hoping here in the near future, we'll get some, some training, especially for some of the dispatchers. I wish I would have brought the post-it note with me. I had, I had written down how long every dispatcher had been here, and it's, there's a lot of new people that have less than a year at the center, and they didn't get any what I call foundational training, you know? So, if you put a new director in and they come in and immediately it's, hey, we have these issues, fix them, you know? The pay's not great, the job's stressful, they've got to come in and fix some problems that are, that are pre-existing. And, you know, we have a radio project, things like that, that are going on. So, I think it's kind of a daunting task for someone to come in. So, I think with a new director, problems that we have is they come in and they quickly become overwhelmed, and it's just not worth it to them, in my opinion, and from, from those that, you know, that have talked to me after they left, so.
What kind of position would we be in if these two dispatchers didn't step up and do these tasks?
It would, it would be a nightmare. I mean, we would have, obviously, like I like to tell, you know, the guys at the sheriff's department and stuff, I mean, this is a, we run the kind of thing that the show must go on. So, regardless of what happens, the show must go on. Someone's got to respond to 911 calls. We will always figure out a way to make it work. You know, Chris has been doing claims and dealing with that end of it. Honestly, Chris and I probably would have just started doing, you know, the scheduling and the pay... and the payroll on top of, you know, with our departments. Scheduling especially is difficult, because those two know the scheduling issues that are there, they know, you know, things that are going on with employees, that they're much, it's much easier for them to get a grasp on that than it would for me to just come in and say, you know what, I have to do the schedule, here's what the schedule's gonna be, sorry, you know? Because obviously I have my own job to do, so it's been, it's been a lot of help. It's, we absolutely needed it, and I'm appreciative that they, they've stepped up and done that, so.
On the, so, we're in July now, have the seats been for assistant director and the actual director, have they been emptied more than they've been filled for the year?
Probably, if not close, it may be closed, but I would say yes, they have.
So there, if, if we're, if those seats have been emptied, then per se, there could be more of a surplus in their payroll?
Yes, there should be a surplus in payroll by the, at the end of the year.
We'd be good financially.
Other than, I will say, other than the likelihood of having to transfer money into overtime, because that's been an issue, so.
We made a transfer, should've been on, did you get a list of transfers, and is that what they were looking at earlier?
I don't think we've gotten any transfers.
Two, two county commissioners meetings ago, I transferred money from the directors to mine, I had over into overtime, because they ran out of overtime, and were gonna start getting a PTO instead of being paid for their overtime, so I did a transfer of money that, and we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to transfer more money for overtime this year, but that, that kind of put out the fire, or at least knocked the flames down a little bit, to where they could go ahead and work overtime.
But there's a possibility that that director position does not get filled by the end of the year, correct? At least the next three months?
Or filled and made again.
I mean, I'd say it's possible, I mean, I hope not, but it's possible.
By the time you advertise, and, I mean, it's at least 30 to 60 days.
So where I'm going with this is, on, do you have what the director makes hourly and what their overtime wage is?
The director's salary, and I think it's 62.
On what average, huh? So the, certainly what you're asking for is achievable, and, but going all the way up to the director's pay is not achievable, but is there, is there room in there to give more than what's asked for by a dollar or two?
For this?
Yeah.
Twenty-nine each.
For the director?
There's certainly a larger gap there, that's being saved by not having a director currently, to where, you know, the reimbursement could have a little bit more on it for some appreciation of keeping the center together.
The company I work for, we have positions that are called in-term positions, you know, they help with training, hires, attend extra meetings and stuff, it might be required a little after training and stuff, maybe that's something, they're here every meeting, and, you know, they're doing the work every time, so maybe that's something to look at. In overtime, maybe creating in-term positions where they might be required to help with onboarding, training, attending meetings and stuff like that, but get a higher pay than...
Well, and the other, the other thing is, is just declare an interim fill of the position, you know, and I think that was brought up at the commissioners' meeting, is having an interim director. You know, if you have an interim director, then wouldn't you pay the director's pay for that position? Now, we wouldn't have two in that position, though, so there'd be that issue, but assistant, you could have an interim assistant, interim director, and they're paid the correct wage that matches the job description. Now, that may not be the permanent person, but they're performing the duties, so they're getting paid accordingly.
And that is what we do have a proposal, again, in front of the commissioners, they just haven't decided yet.
Right, that the director would be salaried or exempt, the assistant director, if you're still wanting to keep that role, would be an hourly.
So, I mean, that is something that during budget, during budget hearings, we do intend to address.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a very fair temporary solution. The amounts make sense, the money's there. I have to say, thank you both for stepping up, they've been to the meetings, they've not missed a beat, all right, commissioner and council, they've gone to both. You know, I've had the pleasure of meeting Stephanie and getting to know her a little bit more on, on part of her shift, she's outstanding. I've, I've known Alyssa since she was a kid, and has been very sharp through, through her life, but yeah, I mean, I think this is a great solution.
So we've got...
We've got a motion on the floor, I think we, it is to advertise, though, because we do have to advertise, we have to have a dollar amount and kind of anticipate what we're looking at cost-wise, and then at our next meeting, we would then appropriate it, essentially, right?
Just, sorry, just for clarification, are you intending to change their hourly rate? Are you intending to pay a stipend of some type, or?
At this, at this point, it's as you presented.
Yeah, just a temporary addition to the hourly rate is what it would be.
Plus the retroactive pay.
Right, right.
Yep, correct.
So, so moving forward, after, let's just say this interim director position doesn't get filled, and these two continue in the capacity that they are, if their hourly rate's not changed, would I, would you want me at that point to come back to a meeting and say, hey, we've got another month, I think they need to be compensated for that month as well? Or how does that go forward, like in an automatic mode?
Yeah, I mean, this is gonna be ongoing until the need goes away.
Okay.
However, for budget hearings, depending on what the 911 Board, you know, in the bigger picture, in the longer-term structure of the department, we're gonna have to make decisions and work together on that, that solution. And if that's having an interim director declared, then that's a different animal, you know? If it means reorganizing, where you have a director, but you don't have an assistant, but you maybe have, you know, two leads or two supervisors, or whatever range of options end up coming out of that discussion, I think we would need to make those decisions.
Okay.
And that's coming up, because budget workshops are the end of August, so.
Yeah.
So are we ready for a vote?
I am.
All those in favor? Motion carried.
Thank you.
I do have a question for you. With, with not having a director or an assistant director, what kind of liability risk are we under right now for the county?
It's hard to say, I mean, we have senior dispatchers, you know, particularly, one of the senior dispatchers is actually out on maternity leave right now, but, I mean, we have, we have people in place that are able to answer questions for the staff and things like that. I don't, I don't think anything's necessarily going unaddressed.
If we were to have a major emergency that didn't end well, and somebody got an attorney and came after the county and said, we didn't do our diligence of having a director in there, or a leader, or proper training?
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure. There's grounds for litigation for all kinds of stuff, all the time, so, yeah, I mean, it's not something that, I mean, I think that it's smart to expose the county to, but at the same time, you know, my, personally, and then I think a lot of the 911 Board members feel the same way, is this, this problem has gotta be solved, we've gotta figure this thing out, it can't keep happening the same way over and over again, we can't be coming back and doing this continually, because we're never going to have a director that, that is here situated and knows our center and knows our county, it's just, it's not gonna happen. We're gonna constantly be trying to train somebody who's, we're asking to train people, you know? It's really, it's kind of a snowball effect, so until we figure out a way to retain our employees, get somebody that comprehends training staff, and the importance of that, and focuses on that, and doesn't focus on things that are unnecessary, unnecessary to be focused on, in my opinion, we're gonna continue down the same road, and to get that done, we've gotta have the right person, plain and simple.
The other thing you were touching on earlier in your presentation was maybe some outside assistance on training?
Yes.
And so I suspect you're putting together a proposal then, and we'll have, if there's some dollars involved to hire...
I hope there won't be any dollars involved, but if there is, it wouldn't be anything super substantial. Again, it would be through Kathleen Lamb, so I've talked to her about that, you know, but that, that's in discussion.
That's a great idea, because it frees up our manpower, our limited manpower we already have, is not pressured with that, you know, it kind of separates that off, but, you know, I would suspect there would be some kind of cost to services, providing those services in time, and it would only be fair to come up with some kind of an agreement to make that happen.
Yeah, and there could be, there may, there may not, again, this is something that she's discussing with, with, you know, with her admin, so how that works out, I don't know yet, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna speak out of turn, when I know, I don't know if she's discussed this yet with her, with her admin staff, so, but she is capable and able to do the training, how it's going to work is to be determined, so.
I also think that we should thank you and Chris, and the 911 Board for stepping up, because obviously you, you're passionate about it, you wouldn't have done this necessarily if it wasn't something you took personally and to the heart, and I think we should thank you for that. I think, you know, the, there should be some extra compensation, but I know you, you both have been so, too modest to, to work on that part, but I really appreciate both of you stepping up as well, and helping out with this.
She lives at Ula.
We good?
Yes, thank you so much, Matt.
Yeah, we need to figure up a dollar amount.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
We don't have one, so.
So we know what to advertise for?
Yeah, maybe at the end of the meeting, we can reevaluate. So Sheila just texted us, she's watching.
Yeah.
Be careful, we need to be careful what we say. She suggested that we come up with a dollar amount this evening, to be specific in our advertisement, because we don't wanna delay that process. So I'm gonna do a few figures, rough math, and then maybe we can revote and have a dollar amount attached to, to that fund for advertisements, so.
Sounds good. Yeah, but we've gotta advertise for a certain...
And we can advertise high.
Yeah.
It, it doesn't matter there, but we don't want it too low or off, so.
Then we'll just have to do it again.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, Health Department.
So we did get the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant that we were not expecting, but it did come through at the last minute, so I took that to the commissioners Thursday, and they voted to apply for it. It's $20,000, that $20,000 will go into contract services and basically just pay for the salary of the person fulfilling the duties. So I did make sample budget, I don't know if you all want this now, or if you just wanna wait till budget hearings, or how you wanna do it.
So it's 20,000, not 25?
It's not 25, yeah. It, it's all salary, it's whoever, we contract, and I sent a copy of the contract to Anton and Polly and Sheila. It's very basic, so it's whoever we hire to fulfill the duties, basically, so it is a contracted position.
I can forward that on YouTube, guys?
Yeah.
Got it. So it went from 25,000 down to 20?
Down to 20, yeah.
Does this contract, like, put out for bid?
It, it is not, the position is filled right now, it's just usually a five-year plan, this is the new year, so it can be advertised, we have not done that in the past, so usually...
So you have a list of duties that you give them?
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't matter if it takes some...
It doesn't matter, okay.
How long?
Yeah, it doesn't matter, like, even, we don't even have to contract it, we can just use it for the Health Department services, as long as those duties are being fulfilled, if I did it, if you did it, if whoever did it, that money can go to the Health Department to be used for, you know, for that position, so.
So do you need us to vote, agree and vote on this?
I don't know, Sheila just put us, so I, I don't know, this is new, so I did make the budget, I know she, you guys have to approve that budget before she can create the fund, so.
Who determines who gets the contract?
Dr. Wells.
But it does require a signature from Jack White?
No.
Is that...
Yeah, yeah, it does, Owen County Emergency Management.
Where?
On the, at the bottom of this, if you're, if you hand it to us, your budget.
I don't know, that, that, this is just what Sheila sent me, I filled in the 20,000 and printed it out, so.
It could be a typo or something.
It could be. I bet, I bet they just, I bet she just copied whatever Jack's template was, and forgot to change it there, so.
Okay, so Sheila says we do need to vote on this, so.
Okay, there you go.
So, someone wanna make a motion that we approve this grant?
I'm gonna approve the grant, I'm gonna have a...
Motion made by Nick, seconded by Daniel. Any questions? All those in favor? Motion carried.
I'm not, not in favor, I just don't know enough about it to...
Oh, okay. I didn't know people raising their hands there, okay. So, six to one abstention. Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
You'll need to lock your iMac first.
Okay.
Six, seven, the list of their hours, how many regulars, how many overtime hours they have.
So 24 hours per week.
Twenty? That one was 15.
It's gonna vary a little bit.
Yeah.
They're not all gonna be time and a half either.
Yeah.
There's holiday, or whatever.
So if that's helpful.
So it's like 15 per person, times two, right?
Chrissy, do you wanna describe what this, I mean, position does a little bit more...
We can always, we can always make another adjustment later.
So with a public health emergency, if, whether it be a natural disaster, or a terrorism event, or a, a public health outbreak, this person has to have a plan on how it's in the community and the county state, they work very closely with Jack, and with stakeholders. This is on Alan's side in the past six years, so it's his position, and I hope to understand it a little better. So basically, he has to have a plan with the state on how Owen County would handle something like that, but he needs to set up an emergency triage center to pass out antibiotics. I hate using this as an example. I hate using this as an example, but COVID, when we did vaccines, he had to set up clinics all over place when we had, you know, if we did mass shots. It's just.
Thank you. All right, transfers, Circuit Court probation.
So I am just here for Circuit Court. I don't actually know about probation's request, but I do my best to answer questions about that. And I don't know if on probation's request, if Natasha indicated she was going to attend or not, but.
I did not see any probation requests. Double check that. Yeah, I did, okay. Oh, yes, okay. So pre-trial grant, 6,500, pre-trial grant to project income. Grant funds were awarded for pre-trial officer wages. We've had that in the past, that's not a new thing.
Yeah, it sounds like it's just a big money for a grant line into.
Yeah, because 9155 is a grant fund. And it's going into 1122, which is one of the regular funds, so. They don't have to be.
They don't have to be. I'm going to make a motion that we grant the transfer funds. And pre-trial grants as well as contract services.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Nick, second by Anton. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Motion carried.
And then while you're here. Under our salary ordinance, there is an action we need to take. And she's mentioned this before and I apologize if we've lost track of it because we may have already pre-authorized it. We had the intent last, at the end of last year, when, if you remember, she had a part-time individual that was going to retire. And so she wanted some overlap because we were going to make that a full-time position. But that ended up not happening quite that way. That individual became the full-time, so there wasn't a need for training overlap or anything like that. And then it just went on. But now the person is actually retiring. That full-time position will be refilled by another employee. But that other employee is already hired for a two-week overlap for training.
Yeah, so it does sound out, the person that's retiring found out that she, because of her previous deployment with the county, many years ago, would be eligible for her if she worked full-time for like six months, so.
She's ready to go, she already was trained, she already did the job, yeah.
But we didn't intend to necessarily stick around for very much longer, so we built a position. And it just helps us keep this running while we're training the new person to just have that overlap. So she's training her replacement.
And we've done this before, not uncommon necessarily. But one of the compensation summaries that's in your packet is for the new employee. And it does make a specific note in there that it is a temporary overlap of position to allow for that training period. There's going to be a two-week payroll amount that's involved with that that we'll need to figure out. And then at some point towards the end of the year, it, depending on what's left in the budget, there may be a transfer or we might have to do an additional appropriation at some point.
I'm hoping we can handle this with a transfer though, I'm not, I don't know that it'll be.
It's not a huge dollar amount, but it's something and it may require some kind of action before the end of the year.
And we often have a little bit of cushion. We try to give a really straightforward budget, like for instance, the transfer you approved, the contract services. You know, we typically have several competency evaluations that we have to pay for. And that number decreased this year, but then a different number, you know, that amount that we needed to increase for GAL services for some children. So we give ourselves a little bit of play in the budget, not a ton, but I'm hoping that there'll be some other lines that we can stack that from. So we haven't asked for any additional. Anything else?
So I'm going to make a motion that we accept the temporary overlap of those two positions or that one position with the new hire and approve the balance of the confirmation summaries while we're at it.
Motion made by Anton, second by Earl. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Motion carried. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff's Department contract.
Hello. So as you know, we have a Axon contract. That is our body camera contract and it's due every five years. Our contract expires this September from the previous five years. And we have the figures for, for the new contract. Everything goes up, nothing's the same as it was five years ago. We did get money from the, from, I believe it was the lit edit, Sheila knows a little bit more about that. Work came from the state. It's the same thing that we just used a few weeks ago when we paid for radios, detective cars, jail transport. We still have a significant amount of money in my 1170 that we would like to use to fulfill this contract. Keep in mind, our body cameras are essential. It limits litigation when claims are made against officers because it records everything that they, that they are experiencing and seeing at the time when it occurs. Furthermore, we have added the draft one into this, into this new contract so that our officers are on the more, more on the road and less in the office typing reports. This generates the reports as we've discussed several times before. That cost, I believe you have, have it in front of you, I think is around 219 if I remember correctly. I would like to, I would like to pay that five-year contract at once. Get it done, we won't have to revisit this every year for the next five years. We will be done with the contract. There is no cost difference whether you pay a year to year or whether you pay it all at once. But what it does is it, it keeps us from having to keep coming and rehashing this every, every year. If we were to pay it in yearly increments, it would be 40,000 the first year, 41.6 the next year, 43.3, 45,000 and 46.8. That would be the five-year breakdown for it. We have the money, it's there. I would like to just use the money out of my 1170 and go ahead and fulfill the five-year contract and be done with it for the next five years.
So question for you. There is no break or difference in cost. That's what, that's what gets me because the company would get that amount of money upfront and there would be no advantage doing that.
We were able to scheme a few things that we needed from them that they did not add in the cost, chargers and some miscellaneous things, things that hook, hook the camera to our uniforms and.
Ancillary things.
It's, yes, insignificant items, but we don't have to pay for it, so that's good.
And this includes the maintenance and all the things that go with the system?
Every two and a half years, we will be given all new body cams.
Okay.
They take care of maintenance, they take care of everything. That's part of the contract, so. Storage, it pays for our storage or digital storage.
Oh, okay, the space, yeah.
That, that costs a lot of money. But it's essential because, you know, we need to store that information for a, you don't know when things are going to occur, when things are going to go to court, when things are going to, you know, transpire in the courtroom. So it's kind of important that we have plenty of space to store that. That gives us unlimited storage for anything that's Axon-related.
We're required by statute at minimum to hold the Axon, or the body cam videos for 189 days minimum. So there is a statutory requirement on that that, that we have to follow as well.
And our, and our policy says that any interaction with the public is got to be recorded. So you figure we take 850 calls a month on average between 850 and 880, somewhere in that ballpark a month. So all of those are recorded, all of those transactions, no matter how long, whether it's 15 minutes or whether it's seven hours of recording. So we have to have plenty of storage and storage is the expensive part of this, it really is. If we, if we weren't doing that and we didn't worry about the storage and we paid by, you know, a couple gigs here and there, it wouldn't be near as much, but we will end up coming back for appropriations over and over and over. And if we go over, it gets even more expensive. The unlimited is, is the most budget-friendly. Because we don't have to worry about that because if you go over.
Kind of an insurance policy.
You're paying, you're paying a huge chunk of money for every time you go over.
Well, on the draft one is of, of the 42,000 or whatever average per year, you know, draft one was like 8,000 of that anyway, so we all.
It was minimal.
And, and that's a huge thing for, for the operational, of the shift for each deputy.
Yeah, keep in mind, we have two people working per shift, the road, it covers 388 square miles. It's essential that they get out of the office and back on the road taking calls as quickly as possible. You go to a, an investigation that's a lengthy investigation, you, you could, you could easily spend eight hours or even, I've spent, I've spent weeks typing reports before. It's, this can do it in minutes, literally just minutes. And those guys are back out on the road working again, waiting for the next call.
And consistency.
Yes.
Across different styles of writing and.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Comfort levels.
Some people are not, are not good writers, some are not, and.
I've read Matt's memoirs, you know, they're fantastic, but he's a good writer, he's a good writer, but, but no. But yes, that's the point that, you know, some people are very good, but then others are not the best at that, so.
Lieutenant just pulled me earlier today of, of one of the guys that they just got hammered on a shift and he, he was scheduled for, to get off work at four and at eight o'clock, he was still in the office typing, just trying to catch up reports over the weekend and.
Over, overtime, I mean.
Right, so that's four hours of overtime because he couldn't stop what he was doing to do his case reports because he was answering calls. So he had to stick around at the end of the shift, finish up certain things because they have to get in the hands of the prosecutor, you know. Things have to happen in a timely manner, so, yeah, that's, that's four hours there that ideally wouldn't necessarily have had to happen, so.
And what, what is the official date that the current contract expires?
I believe the 14th of September.
September 14th, okay. When I saw the paid in full amount, I was very intrigued by that. I kind of assumed that there was a little bit of a break in that, but you know what? If there's no break, I'm not sure, I'm comfortable, especially knowing that we're going into some tough financial situations here in the coming years. Having a steady budgeted amount from year to year and not, and keeping our money a little bit longer than we otherwise would have is.
I understand that.
You see where I'm going with that?
I do, and, and I would say that while we know we have it now in the, in my 1170 fund, I don't have to ask for additional appropriations that come out of the county's general fund to pay for this. I have the money. If, if we, if we do it year by year and something does come up and I have to use that money out of my 1170, now we're taking money out of the general fund to help pay for this and.
Either way, though, using the 1170 here, we'd either budget for it out of 1170 or we'd spend the cash out of 1170.
I, I see your point, I just, I, I think if we have the money to pay it, be done with it and not have to worry about it again. That's just mine, but, but that's your guys' decision.
I mean, either, yeah, and, and the other is, is there any follow-up pressure that can be put on the vendor to see if they can give us anything?
They don't give.
Or they kind of take it and leave it kind of?
Axon all but is a monopoly.
They are monopoly, they don't have to negotiate anything because they have the monopoly in, in this, in this game. And, and they don't, because I, I asked that, when we, when we were having our Zoom conference, I said, so if we pay this one, one, one ticket, we pay it all, do we get a break? And he's like, no.
And it's $200,000 is nothing to them, we're a small agency, I mean, imagine what large agents. Yeah, imagine what Indianapolis is paying them for state.
Millions, millions.
State, they got at least, you know, almost 13,000 cameras. Or 1,300 cameras.
Do the math, yeah.
Yeah, do the math.
If you do pay it in full, I'd like to see you somewhere have it earmarked.
Yeah, that's a very good point.
We need to budget this because it's going to be back, because in five years, we may not have $200,000.
That's what I worry about.
Five years from now, yeah.
That's what I worry about.
Pay it now, but in four years, we need to say, you know, have it on a calendar or something somewhere and say, hey, we have a budget next year from this.
Because it'll be 350,000.
Yeah. Well, and I'm almost, you know, along, along Councilman Browning's point is.
Budgeting year by year is easy.
Yeah, and, or at least have some, a separate fund where in the future, when we get these, these lit distributions, like supplementals, we, we fund certain buckets, savings buckets, you know, that we know that we're going to have to have bulletproof vests every so many years. We know that we have to have body cameras and so on. And there's a few other departments, you know, highway, that kind of thing, where, where there's these buckets that are kind of out there that we know kind of are not yearly, but they come around.
And we have, we mentioned that and we've brought that up before, that we would like to have a, a separate Axon budget line. It is our most expensive contract outside of vehicles. Axon is the most expensive contract we have and it's, and it's only going up, it's not going to get cheaper.
Well, if we can put money into it every year, then in five years, we have the money to do it.
Or at least a good head start.
Yeah, a good head start.
I mean, like, is this money, like, the, say, you know, paid one year at a time and we had 177, 180,000. Is that money is sitting in the bank? Is it invested to where it gets interest?
It does.
So we're, we are losing out on that interest that I would like to at least see them, you know, compensate for that.
Yeah, and I just, it sounds doubtful, but.
Matt brought up a good point too, that Axon does own TASER as well. So you look at our, the cost of our TASERS, we did, we do have new TASER, so it'll be a while before we get new ones. But they do own TASER as well. They own everything.
All corners, all corners.
They don't own Flock, they don't own Flock yet, but they have their own brand, they will.
They may make an offer, yeah. Okay, so yes, Browning, yeah, the, the savings thing, but that's not today's decision. But yeah, I mean, I, I just feel more comfortable hanging on to our money, to be honest. I, I just, I'd rather have that money in the bank, in that fund.
And work, I mean, work for us.
We know that this is an expense, he's got a great idea anyway. We could start earmarking it using the money we still have in our possession for the, for the other four years and come up with some kind of a plan.
Where it's still drawing interest, but it's still earmarked.
But you know, even if there was a 5% discount, I'd be all for the full-time payment. But that's just not there.
I wish I could tell you.
Yeah, it's just not there and it's, you know, remember when we redid the 911, all that system stuff? There was a difference, an advantage to us doing that and we did it. This is not the case and it's more money. And I just, not knowing where we're going to be at in '26, '27 with cash balances and obligations, I, I just feel more comfortable going a year at a time.
Want to make a motion, Mr.?
I'll make a motion that we do it here number one now. We need to do an appropriation out of 1170 then for it.
Yes, what was the 40?
And we haven't been budgeting for, did we do it five years or it's for some large quantity originally? What was our original action?
We paid yearly. It was a five-year contract then as well that we paid yearly.
So we have been paying it yearly already, so wouldn't it be in the budget?
So the.
Any increase aside.
Yes.
So we may not really need to do a big appropriation because if it's already partly at least in there, then we just need either a difference or. then we just need either a difference or monitor that and see where we're at at the end of the year, right?
Yeah, it, it, it goes in increments a little bit here, it does go up every year.
Right. What's year one?
Forty thousand, fifty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents.
And so have we paid year five already then of the expiring contract? And was that paid this year or was that paid in twenty-four?
I would have to go back, I would have to-
With the September renewal?
I would have to go back to Donna and, and have her pull the records, I, I don't know the answer to that.
Can we wait until our next meeting to finalize this and get some of this stuff? Uh, August eleventh? That's still a month ahead of the contract.
If, if we're not, if we haven't paid by September fourteenth, then our cameras shut off.
Okay.
We're, we're done.
So we're good if we can make a decision at our August meeting?
Doesn't it have to be advertised?
We could pick an amount to be safe, but we do need to narrow that down because the annual now is in the budget. So we wouldn't have to appropriate this kind of money. We could, I'll tell you what, I'll make the motion, there was no second, correct? Okay, so I'll make the motion that we advertise up to forty thousand, fifty-four dollars for the next meeting, contingent on confirming the budget amount and what's in there now and whatever difference may apply, and then we can consider that in, at our August meeting, how's that sound?
Motion made by Anton, second by Nick, are there any questions?
Ryan, I mean, I know, I'm like you, I don't want to sit two courts with that, set camera.
Right.
No, no, our, our cameras are essential, I, I, I remember a time in law enforcement when we didn't have cameras, and I was against, and I was against them when they first came out. But I've seen officers exonerated more times than, than they've been hung by body cam footage, and, and it's essential to make sure I keep my officers safe when, when I know they've made the right choices and they've done the right things, I don't want them in a position.
They don't want to work without them.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
And, and on that budget side of it, Anton, I'm not, the more I sit here and think about it, when that, when we first did that five-year contract, I believe the prosecutor's office paid the first year, and I'm not a hundred percent sure we did budget for that.
Because we've had to have been paying it from somewhere.
Right.
So-
I think that may have been, um, it may have eventually been budgeted, but-
Yeah, I mean-
First couple of years, I'm almost positive.
Do the whole amount.
Yeah.
Best case, part of it or none of it, so, yeah, the advertisement still gives us flexibility for August, but let's work on that for sure, yeah.
Are we ready for a vote? All those in favor? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting that together, yeah.
So there's a chance that you're eligible for it already?
Potentially, yeah.
And if so, you might be-
Yeah, we don't have to.
Have to be used first.
Yeah, just leave it in cash, yeah.
All right.
I'm glad.
Twenty-twenty-five grant application request.
That's gonna save them a boatload, boatload.
Hi.
Your time.
Thanks for waiting.
Cindy Rotman with Hamilton Center, I'm the program manager, I am here on behalf of the Local Coordinating Council tonight, you all know what that's for, the Local Coordinating Council uses funds to initiate substance abuse prevention, education, and criminal justice. The total amount, I believe, was sent to you by Beck Scott of eighteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. Out of that, six thousand went to education, six thousand went to law enforcement and judicial, and six thousand went to intervention and treatment, and then five hundred and sixty-five ninety-eight for office supplies or administration. Any questions for me?
Is this a grant?
This is a local coordinating council funds.
Okay.
That comes out of fees, court fees typically.
Okay. You just need, you need a counsel.
We just need, we just need you to say we can have the money.
I made a motion that it was meant to grant a grant application of eighteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Motion made by Nick, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Anton? Are there any questions? All those in favor? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners review. There you go.
And Norm, how are you doing, by the way? Doing your new role, right?
Full of regret. And I don't need a pro. I'm assuming everyone knows we do have roads closed, or if you're not, we got it right. I've not heard anything on a projection of when that's gonna be resolved. But it was, I went out again Saturday just to re-verify since it was dark that night when I was out there, it's not good, so, and it's gonna be quite a chore to get that out there and get it repaired, so. I haven't seen any quotes or anything yet, I'm sure they're working on that. I'm not so sure that we shouldn't give that out and not do it in-house because of the depth of the pipe function. We did, uh, we did tackle the nine-one-one, meant to, you know, the seven meeting. I personally would like to speak to these two individuals, myself, and I'm not sure the words said and they are on that, but that'll happen before that seven meeting, it's my part of the work. If there's any questions, only if they inspire what I'll answer if I know it.
Yes, we still need a capital improvement plan, that is something that got brought up last year. It's a technical thing, legally, you know, I feel we're still good as far as use of edit funds and, and what the law says, but we should have that plan, and I believe that's being worked on, but try to get that on your radar, we've not had an update on that in a while, so, I know the attorney was thinking, but-
The September was the deadline or something?
Yeah, and all it has to say is, we've got a plan and we're gonna use the money for any legal purpose per Indiana Code, I mean, it doesn't have to be that complicated, but we do need a plan. The commissioners have to pass that, and that's something that, that's in their authority. Human resources, I, I understand that that's gonna be an August, also an August agenda item for you all to finalize. So those are the two priority items that I had on my question list for the commissioners. Yeah, capital improvement plan and human resources, yeah.
And you guys have already approved the contract, is that the amount?
Hmm, not, not formally, I think we were kind of, some general dollar amounts we've been throwing around, but-
So, are you waiting on commissioners or for us to say that we want to do that? I thought we already-
Right, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Polly, but I don't think we've ever really formally been presented a plan, we've-
Tony was working on that.
Yeah, I understand he might be, but we've never had, I mean, we've talked about it generally, like, oh, contract, employee, this or that, what we want to do, but we've never had someone come to us and say, we've decided to contract this out for these services, and here's a draft copy of that contract, here's the rates, we've, we've never actually gotten that, so I think after your August meeting, when you make that decision, I would suspect August eleventh at our next meeting, we would have some kind of a proposal, right?
Based with Tony, we can see we'll work out on that as well.
Do we just include it on our agenda and go from there, yeah?
And if I do, if I get anything submitted, will it go down then, just send it to you?
Yeah, and I'll pass it on to everyone.
Yeah.
Send it to Sheila, too.
Yeah. Anything else?
Let's see, Commissioner.
Um, Chair, are we ready for the soft bill?
Oh.
We already did that?
We already did that?
We did.
So, yes.
Yes, you did.
Was that last meeting?
No, that was earlier on. Chris, Chris has a question.
How are you, Chris?
Morning, or this afternoon, evening, whatever.
Yeah.
Couple meetings ago, I came to you guys and requested to vacate an EMT position and turn that into a paramedic position. We had the opportunity at that time to put on an additional paramedic. I presented with that same issue again, I've got an opening, actually I have, right now I have two EMT physicians that are open, and I have a paramedic that's wanting to come work for us, she works for us part-time. Her full-time position's in Bloomington, very good paramedic, she did her clinicals with us, and I sent out an email the other day to kind of test the waters, to see if that's something that would be allowed again. Anton had sent me some numbers on it, it'll cost about nine thousand dollars per year. Here we are halfway through the year, and so it's not gonna cost us that much this year, but I have that opportunity again. That's gonna make us heavy on paramedics, but that makes us that much more flexible and gives us some advantages for scheduling and stuff, so.
You'd like to see this happen?
Pardon me?
You'd like to see this happen?
Almost definitely, yeah.
Okay, and your money's gonna be nine thousand dollars. So it would be prorated for this year?
Yeah, it would be prorated for this year, and, and I would just suggest, because we have had those EMT positions that are open, we've been filling it with part-time, I would just suggest no money yet this year, but let's look at the end of the year, see how we end up, and I may be able to move money around and be able to pay for it out of my own budget, so I, I don't know that for sure, but-
Yeah, I was gonna suggest that, kind of like we were thinking about some of the other departments. I'm gonna make a motion that we vacate one full-time EMT position in EMS, and we add a full-time paramedic position.
All seconded.
Motion made by Anton, second by Nick, any questions? All those in favor? Motion carried.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Help us out if you understand.
Your second in the vote.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other elected officials or department heads?
Sometimes it helps when you give a minute, sometimes like- Because she had-
Public comment?
One on a vote that was six-zero. It's a little trick.
Pardon?
You just need to sign the transfer of funds or-
I did not have a copy of that, and I don't have it in here either.
It's in the packet. It was in with, it was right after the additional appropriations, probably in the other part of the packet, Polly, that's out of the green, somewhere in that stack.
So do we need to vote on that?
We already did.
Okay. Yes.
For the transmission? Circuit court and probation?
Our budget hearings are, it's the last week of August?
We didn't all together.
Oh, yeah, definitely. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine.
Did you see that?
Yes.
I did.
Yeah, that just came in.
Did you need that?
I don't know if I need to-
Yeah, they're just still working on it.
No, I don't guess I need to sign it, but we did, we already did that.
That's good news. Good news, but- Yeah, that would be a real kick in the butt.
I will, huh, pardon, yeah, nobody was up. I will give everybody a heads up, they're going to have a special meeting, and they would like as many councils to come on the August fifteenth regarding the jail. They're gonna have, um-
Presentations?
Yes, they're also gonna have some presentations, and Jeff Peters is gonna be there at the August seventh commissioners meeting as well, so.
So is the fifteenth a special meeting?
Yes, and that, that's just on the jail.
At what time?
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock.
Here? If I had to make one of the other meetings, it would be the fifteenth because of-
Yeah, that would be the most important one, yes.
I, you know, I'm gonna be a little blunt on the jail, just to bring this up for discussion, so, the council had already voted to limit or, or define a limit for the jail project. We decided that, hey, we're only gonna work with the taxes we have currently, the tax rates, the budgets we have now, which we have earmarked for payment, but the concern is that if whatever project comes about is more money, then are we going to then raise taxes? I mean, that's the bottom line, so I, it, I still am not in favor of that, I don't know where everybody in general feels with that, but we just need a project, we need a project that fits within our limitation. It might be a little bit smaller because a year has gone by, or the costs have gone up, but the limit is still the limit, at least as we've last voted on. Now, if the council wants to revisit that or open that back up for something different, that can always be done, but, I mean, that's, that's the simple, the simple answer, I guess, I'm, I'm, didn't want to beat around the bush, I mean, if we're having a special meeting, I would want some kind of concrete plan that fits within our budget.
Well, we, we stated and we voted on the limit of twenty-five million, and that's what we can afford. And I, you know, have said from day one, we, we have to live within our means, but also we know we're going to have to have a jail, that's not an option, and the, the sooner we do it, the less it's going to cost, so, I mean, we need to, now that we've got our ducks in a row, we need to move forward, but we already, we have set that limit, we know that limit's there.
And again, I don't know, you know, for a dollar amount, I don't know if twenty-five is, is-
That's what-
A pro, is really a firm number, because there's so many variables.
That's what we voted on.
We voted on not a dollar amount, we voted on the current tax rate and budget earmarks that we have. Now, time is a big factor in that, and we've burned through a lot of time, which affects the project limitation, so I would be very cautious on a fixed dollar amount, because I don't remember us specifically saying twenty-five is the limit, I think we were estimating some costs, but it was really about the tax rate, the levy, and the budget. Those are our restrictions, anything outside of that is gonna require more taxes, and I, I just want to be very careful with that.
I've never been in favor of raising the taxes.
Madam Chair, I'm on record tonight, I, I would not vote for a tax increase.
No.
Do I have to get cornered somewhere, figure out where we can get the money somehow, but not by raising the tax on people, there's so much uncertainty right now-
Right, right.
About the tax rates and all this going on, so, no, I just-
I think we're all in agreement with that.
I'm willing to testify tonight that I would not raise taxes.
Yeah, I've said it before, I'll say it again, I'm not in favor of raising taxes.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to change your minds, I'm not in favor of changing any taxes, I, my point, I guess, is, I think we need to be very careful on project cost and how that fits, yeah, and I'm, I'm, the longer we go without a decision, the, the more leery I am of these upper-end numbers, you know, the twenty-five, the twenty- you know, the 25, the 24s.
Well, if we have to, I mean, you know...
Yeah.
Hopefully, this August 15th meeting will have some hard fixed numbers that we've not had before, and then we can revisit that and make sure that that's within our means.
That's what I'm hopeful would come out of that. I just don't want the folks that are coming to that meeting, the consultants and stuff, to not be sensitive to that, because it's, it's just going to hit a brick wall. If we're not willing to change anything, and we're just going to keep with what we originally decided, which I think is the case, then I don't want them wasting their time. I don't want them coming up with a pie-in-the-sky project that's not going to work.
I appreciate that, Anton.
Yeah, so that's just why I wanted to bring that up tonight and kind of reinforce that.
Anton, you had mentioned before about extending the tax for the jail project.
Yes.
From the 22 to the 25, which is still on the table because they changed the law.
Yes.
Are you still in favor of doing that?
So...
It's not a new tax, it's just extending what's in place.
Correct. That, that also ended up having a new twist. Senate Bill 1 eliminated the jail lit anyway. So there is, there won't be any limit to begin with. And so we'll have a new, kind of a new parameter automatically by default to work with in terms of income tax at that point. So that's maybe good news in that there isn't a limit or an issue there, it's just going to continue. But it's not going to be a jail lit, that they won't have such a designation.
So you're saying, Anton, they're going to do away with the sunset clause?
It's, it's all going to go away, it's going to be totally redone. So there won't be a jail lit, there's no PSAP lit. All of those sublets, most of them are going to be eliminated, and instead you're going to have one total lit rate that we allocate. Within that limit. So it gives us more flexibility, which is a good thing, but we got to be very careful when that time comes in a couple of years to make sure we connect the dots properly and we keep all of our obligations steady under, from old to new, so...
So basically, unless the council made a decision to stop a certain amount of taxes.
Correct.
That taxes that we tell them that would go on for, what, 22 years? Could go on forever?
Yeah, it could. Now, that's only 2/10ths of the rate anyway, it's not all of it. But as far as the county rate at 2 and 1/2, it'll probably go down anyway because of the restructure. We will no longer have to share all, certain parts of that income tax revenue with the towns. The town would probably increase their rate, and taxpayers in town would have a higher rate. But the county rate might actually go down even by meeting our obligations. It's, it's a very complicated thing, it's a good thing you brought it up, but it's something two to three years down the road.
That aspect right there is a very positive.
It is, I, I think it can be, yeah.
Because the town was getting, you know, an increase...
Correct.
That they did not ask for, and they, you know, might not have needed.
We're going to trim the million-dollar side of the budget, this coming year.
Auditor's office.
Yeah, we, I, I don't know what the million-dollar figure is, but, but for us in the county, you know, just looking at property tax, you're looking at 350,000 to 400,000. And so we're going to have to, when we do our budget hearings, we're going to have to think a little bit about the limitation we'll have on property tax.
On that note, I mean, this, the budgets that have been submitted, and I urge everybody that's not submitted theirs to do that quickly. We are going to really need, I encourage everyone to reach out to their departments that they're a liaison to, you know, help them, you know, maybe see where they can cut costs or, or, because, yeah, we've got a lot of big decisions.
And that's a good point, too, in this discussion, is one of the most important numbers we need for budget workshops is going to have to come from the assessor, the treasurer, and the auditor, is kind of using this year's tax data and doing a hypothetical amount of what the credit would have been if it was in place this year, the loss. Because remember, homeowners, homesteads are going to get a 10% tax credit off of their bill. And it's going to be of similar financial hit as a tax cap, a circuit breaker, which we already have. And so our problem is, we need to know as accurately as possible, what is that dollar amount going to be? Because that's what we have to figure in to our forms that Sheila works with in coming up with our bottom line. What can we afford, what's our, what kind of revenue are we getting, what are we losing? That is going to be a critical thing to figure. And we've got a little bit of time to do it, but I, I don't, I want to make sure we, we have hands on that. And so I would encourage the auditor, the assessor, and the treasurer to work on those numbers. And I'm willing to help, but we're all willing to chip in, but I think that's going to be our most critical number to have. So...
Because that will give us more of a picture of what we're going to have to work with.
Right.
Any other council comments on the 2026 budget hearing review?
I do have something I wanted to bring up earlier and I forgot. When we're talking about that HR person, and I'm still not a big fan of it. And I haven't been since the beginning, and I'm looking at Matt, and I'm seeing that we cannot afford a 9-1-1 director. And I'm, and I know that's what it is. It's, it's money, and I know it's everything else, but I know a lot of it's money. And this HR person, to get somebody in here is $50,000 to $70,000, and I don't think we can swing it. I've looked at the numbers, I've saw the million-dollar number, too, for the budget decrease. And I'm looking at all that stuff, and I just don't think that is where we need to focus. And one of the things I think as a council and commissioners and pretty much anybody that's elected or appointed, we need to all remember that we're here at the will of the taxpayers, not at the will of the employees. And I do not dislike any employees whatsoever, I really like them a lot, all of them. But I do remember that we are here at the will of the taxpayers. And we really need to look, especially during this budget year, at what is important. As a county, what are we responsible for? Emergency services, law enforcement, the court system, the judicial system, the auditor's office of taxes, all of that. What is the most important? We probably need to refocus down on the most important stuff and just really look at what is priority 1 and what's priority 20. Because priority 20 probably needs to be cut out. We're just going to have to save money. I firmly believe we need a new jail, and I think there's money there, and I don't want to cut it too short. But I also think, I look at these things every year, and it's just, is all this money going to the right places? And I don't believe so. I've had, talked to people, and I don't want to throw any departments under the bus right now, but there are departments I just don't think need to exist via taxpayer funding. And I, I hope we all get a chance to look at all that stuff this year. And I realize the budget deficit that we're not going to get is going to hurt, but maybe it's the correction that taxpayers needed. That's all I had to say.
Anybody else have anything to... Do we want to bring up the wage study?
Yeah, so in your packets, in the red folders, there's the numbers that Sheila prepared to date for budgets. We did complete our work with the consultant on our wage structure. We do have new targets that, if you remember, the ones we've been working off of with a series of growth factors over the last several budget years were kind of estimates. We now have a reset with new targets, which we're going to be plugging into our spreadsheet and have ready for you for our workshops. Review those just to familiarize yourself with it. Again, it doesn't have anything to do with this year, it's, we're talking 2026. I think the most important first step that we'll probably need to think about for our workshops is at least bringing everybody up to that minimum, that low point, like we did the original time, because you have to, it's very important to have the correlation between different classifications correct. That's the priority number one with this update. In the past, a lot of people have questioned, you know, well, why do we need to pay a consultant to tell us we need to pay more money to our employees? I get it, but that's not really what this work is about. The big thing is, are they classified correctly? Are they being compensated correctly for their job description and what work they're actually doing? And I think we need to be very, not formal, but very, what's the word I'm looking for? Very strict with following that, because if you don't, then everything's out of whack. You have situations like we've been dealing with years prior, where so-and-so got a this, and this person didn't, and they do more work, and this person does less. We, we've got to operate in a very objective and formal fashion when it comes to classifying these positions. And the consultant has provided us with the data. We just need to consider it and do what we can when we work on the budget for '26. So look that over and let Polly or know, know, Polly or I know if you have any questions with that, and then we'll go from there, so...
Matt?
Are we able to see the document?
Yes, yes, we'll have Sheila send it out.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, for you, Matt, maybe not, no. I'll also mention, the Association of Indiana Counties has their annual conference coming up.
Yes.
If you're interested in attending that, please do. Considering some of the issues that are going on with the state-level legislation and changes, there's a variety of workshops, speakers, and an important discussion that centers around preparing counties for 2026 budget development and some of the decisions that we're going to have to be making. I also want to bring up something that Councilman Frye had, had brought up, and something that I, has been kind of on my to-do list, is, is looking back at grants. You know, we don't really make an investment right now in grants, pursuing those. We have a smattering of things going on. We have, health department pursues this or that and so on, but we don't really put a lot into that. There, there are things out there that aren't necessarily things that require strings or that require large matches, if any. Even if it's $20,000 to help us put towards a piece of equipment or an upgrade to something in the dispatch center or whatever, something for Chris, we just don't have a, a regular way or method of going after that stuff. And we're kind of late to the game, to be honest. But we got to start at some point, and so we probably should put some, some discussion and more discussion into that, and maybe Joe can help with that.
Do you have the dates for the conference?
Yeah, the conference is September 29th...
29th.
Through the 2nd.
Can I have that down?
But really, the meat of it is the 30th and the 1st.
And that will be at French Flit.
Yeah, so if you're limited on time and you can't attend the whole time, at least consider Tuesday and Wednesday, because that's when the bulk of the activity occurs, so...
I urge everyone to go, they're very, very good and well put on, so... Anybody have anything else? A wish made adjourned, seconded by Daniel. All right, thanks, everybody, for coming.